Call to order the May 4th meeting of the Cary Town Council's quasi judicial meeting. And we've had a little difficulty and that's why we're starting just a little bit late. And as soon as I can find my, there it is, my red letter agenda will get started. We're at the first item on the agenda which is the adoption. Before we get to that, I would ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to note that Councilor Smith is not attending tonight due to a previously scheduled trip. He's out of town. And so now we're ready to adopt the agenda and I would entertain a motion to do so.
I move second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to our one and only quasi judicial hearing. And it's evidentiary hearing 16SP 059. The space self, this case is before us tonight because the applicant has required a, requires a special use permit. And as a reminder to those in the audience this evening, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Council acts like the judge and can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina and United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing. The constitution really ties our hands on what we can, what evidence we can accept. And I apologize in advance for what might seem to be burdensome or complex process. We will consider the competent material and substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether this development will affect property values and whether any increase in traffic resulting from this development will pose a danger to public safety. To those who are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can only accept testimony from you on factual issues and what you have observed, not your opinion. Our contractual attorney, who is sitting to my left, will help us determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. The hearing procedures and details and rules are on the printed agenda and any speakers who would like to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. And we'll pause at this time for a moment to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oath. And council will pause from any action until this has been completed. financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose. And I'll start on my left with Mr. Yerha.
I have not.
Ms. Bush.
I have not.
Ms. France.
No sir.
I haven't.
I have not.
Ms. Robinson.
I haven't.
Mr. George, okay. Based on what we've heard disclosed from our council members, I would invite any party to this matter if they have an objection to a council member's participation. Any objections? Okay, we'll now move to and open the quasi judicial public hearing. And Doug Loveland of our staff will introduce this hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is a request by Withers Ravanell on behalf of Stein Investment Group for a modification request for a buffer width reduction. As you're aware, it is now possible for an applicant to bring a modification request to council without also bringing the entire site plan for consideration, such as the case tonight. The site plan, of course, does still need to go through town staff review. I will however go through and give some information on, general information on the development plan and on the site itself, just to provide context for council and as well for our audience. The applicant is proposing a self-storage warehouse use on a seven acre property located on Mainard Crossing Court. This is west of northwest Mainard Road, north of High House Road, north of Mainard Crossing Shopping Center, which you see on the, on the south of the development there. The site is located in a conditional use industrial zoning district. This property was actually rezoned out this time last year. It does permit self-storage warehouse. As a matter of fact, it only permits self-storage warehouse and outdoor storage. As you can see, there are residential uses to the north and to the west of the property and commercial development to the south and to the east. The property is currently undeveloped. Note the power lines running along the western property line. They then take off to the northeast. That's going to be a factor in the modification request, as we'll see here in a moment. The picture in the top left is from Mainard Crossing Court looking south, southwest. You can see it's a very flat site or fairly flat site. You see the power lines there in the background. There are trees that run along the perimeter of the site. Other than that, it is a fairly open site. Switching to the bottom right, now we're looking more north towards the Weatherstone subdivision. Again, you can kind of see the power lines slanting through there. These were taken in April, so it's pretty leafy. Just a few more photos here. These were taken in March, so they're leaf off. But again, these are looking north towards the Weatherstone subdivision from the middle of the site. You can see how clear the, the site is now. So this is a plan view of the existing conditions. You can see where the survey has captured the existing vegetation along the perimeter. There's a small island of vegetation here that, that would not remain. Other important thing to note is that 100-foot Duke Energy easement that runs through the site. Power lines will of course remain on the site and are something that the applicant is having to work around. So here's the development proposal. Two buildings here for the mini storage use. The site connects to Mainard Crossing Court. The Duke Energy easement, of course, is there. Obviously, the buildings can't locate within that easement. That is a constraint that they're working around. Mini storage use, when it's adjacent to detached residential with certain lot size, requires a 65-foot wide buffer. So the residential uses to the north and to the west, they're meeting that buffer requirement on the west. They're aided by the fact that that subdivision to the west already provided some buffer width, so they didn't have to provide the entire buffer width. That was not the case for the subdivision to the north. There is not a platted buffer. There's a buffer on the lots there, but that doesn't count towards a buffer requirement. So they had to provide a 65-foot wide buffer along that northern property line. And normally what a development would do is just put it parallel to that property line as you see there in blue. But the LDO does not allow a buffer to run inside of an easement concurrent with an easement. And if it did, Duke Power wouldn't let them plant trees in that easement anyways. So what the applicant is proposing is, is a modified buffer. It's in two pieces, which is fine. You can see the yellow there. The issue is, is that only averages it out to a 50-foot width instead of the 65-foot width, hence the modification request. A few things of note, the buffer pinches down to 30 feet there at that location. That's the minimum permissible width. Point out the distance there from building A to that northern property line is, is 88 feet. That concludes staff's initial presentation. I'll hand it over to the applicant. And once all other speakers have had a chance to speak, we'll come back with our final observations.
Okay. Very good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of the applicant in this case. Here with me tonight is Mr. Ed Tang of Withers and Ravanell, who will be providing expert testimony associated with the justification for this buffer reduction. Doug did a great job of describing essentially what the essence of the request is. And that is that the code would otherwise require 65 feet in this area and we, we won't be able to accommodate that and, and still be able to develop in the way that we believe the site should be developed as. And it's primarily because of the 100-foot Duke Energy easement. And it's not just the fact that you have 100-foot easement, it's the location of the easement as well as the, the unusual kind of angle that it takes at the site. And then, you know, coupled with the, the constraints associated with existing road infrastructure and the, and the, the road connection that's going to be required as part of the site plan. This is a connection that currently doesn't exist and when this site gets developed, the connectivity requirements require that that connection be made. So in, in total, you'll hear from, from Mr. Tang, we believe that the easement presents a, a practical difficulty in developing this site and satisfying the 65-foot LDO requirements. You'll also hear from Mr. Tang that we believe that the, providing a 50-foot type A buffer satisfies the goals and purposes of the ordinance, especially when you consider that we are and we're offering as a condition of this approval, that a minimum additional 7,200 square feet of open space be provided in this area here. There's a, an exhibit in the staff report which references the undeveloped area and in that area, we're providing and we would like to offer as a condition of this approval, a minimum of 7,200 square feet of additional open space in that area. As you'll hear from Mr. Tang, with that additional open space, that the total amount of buffering that we're providing as part of this case actually exceeds what would be provided if we were to comply with the 65-foot requirement that applies to the site. Of course, it's being located in a different location, but the code permits that in this instance, as is noted in the, the requirements for granting this modification. The, the last point that I'll make, and this is recognizing the ordinance and you'll hear this from Mr. Tang, it's my personal belief, not that it matters for evidentiary purposes, but it's my personal belief that the code requirements with respect to many storage facilities are antiquated. They're antiquated in how they treat them. I mean, they treat them as industrial uses, which is why this site was zoned industrial in the first place. They're really not industrial uses anymore. They're, they, they look and feel more like office buildings, but they're really quiet. They're really safe. They're really secure. They've, they've come a long ways in the 15 to 20 years that we've seen them. They're antiquated as it relates to the buffering requirements. You know, if, if this were an office building of, you know, 50,000 square feet or more, the site would require a 50-foot buffer. We would be able to comply with that if we were an office building, but we're not. We look like one. We feel like one. We're a heck of a lot more quiet than one. We generate a heck of a lot more traffic than one. But the code requires a 65-foot buffer for this use because again, I, I believe and I think you'll hear from Mr. Tang, that our belief is the code requirements with respect to buffering of many storage facilities are antiquated. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Tang, who will provide the evidence associated with this application and then I will close. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Ed Tang with Withers Ravanell, 115 Michigan Drive here in Cary. I'm going to just recap some of my qualifications as part of the hearing. I hold a bachelor's science degree from the Florida Institute of Technology. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina and in the state of Florida. I've been in the practice of civil engineering for the last 23 years. Currently, I'm a senior project manager at Withers Ravanell. I've been in this role for the last three and a half years. And the previous 10 years at another local engineering firm here in town. My role in this project is that I had acted as the senior project manager from the day that this project was submitted to you all as a rezoning case, going back, as Mr. Loveland said, almost a year now, to currently overseeing the design and the site plan approval processes for this project. And therefore, I oversaw the development of the site plan before you tonight. Just a quick recap of the location of the project and orientation on this slide. As, as you can tell, on the right-hand side of the screen, the road that goes top to bottom is northwest Mainard Road. Mainard Crossing Court is this road that is in the shape of a C. Most of you that have driven down there know that it loops back upon itself. This building here is the existing cycling spoken here building. This building down here is the existing Volvo of Cary car dealership. And this building over here is the existing Gerber body shop and glass shop. It's a collision repair shop. And to the north is the Weatherstone subdivision and immediately to our west is the Highland Oaks subdivision. And as Mr. Loveland pointed out earlier, there is a 100-foot wide Duke Energy transmission line easement that contains three large 230 kilowatt or kilovolt transmission lines that runs basically from US 1 down at Regency, snakes its way up through town and then passes through this site on its way to, towards Chapel Hill Road, paralleling the railroad corridor there. So that's kind of where this power line is coming and going to. Under the current LDO requirements, this type of use is a class six use. We are parked up against a existing class two use against these residential neighborhoods to the north and to the west. And per the LDO, we would be required, as previously mentioned, a 65-foot wide type A buffer. Normally, we would parallel the northern property line as in the graphic that Mr. Loveland showed earlier. We would offset the property line 65 feet and that would be our 65-foot buffer to be planted or to retain the existing vegetation in it. With that, as, as pointed out already, this site is problematic in trying to meet that requirement because of the existing Duke power line and easement. The existence of that 100-foot buffer along this northern boundary and its angle and skew precludes us from being able to provide that buffer in a typical manner. And that is why we have come before you tonight with a request for a reduction to 50-foot, but also, as you can tell, our 50-foot request is also in a slightly different shape than normal, but it provides it in meeting the code. So I'm going to go back to the next slide. This is a slide showing again what the site looks like today. It is basically, has been cleared. It's been like this for the last 20 years since this property existed. There is this clump of vegetation that's on our property that you can see there and then the vegetation along the west side of the existing power line. And then there is a small cluster of trees and shrubs here, mainly straddling an existing drainage ditch that runs in this area today. Because of the power line, it makes it impractical for us to provide much of that buffer in a normal way. So we've had to relocate it to an area south of the transmission line easement, which is the area here shown in the green, to make up for it. As you recall from the previous slide, there is no vegetation there, so we are having to create that buffer in that area. And then there's an area to the north and west that we're adding to that is not in the easement as well. So the request before you tonight is for a 15-foot reduction from the 65-foot that is required to 50-foot. The type A buffer, which is a type A, which is the classification for the level of opacity, we're keeping it the same. We're not asking for a change in that. We're asking to keep it as a type A buffer, which will retain the desired level of opacity from the neighbors looking towards the site. Furthermore, the site plan indicates that the proposed 50-foot type A will be burned. This area here in the green on the plan, we are proposing a four-foot berm in that area. And then we're going to plant the trees and shrubs that make up the buffer on top of that. So that will provide an additional visual buffer for better relief if you were in the neighborhood looking back towards the site. Right now, if you were in the neighborhood looking at the site, you would see a cleared field. Probably you would see that road, Mainard Crossing Court and maybe the back of the car dealership as well. On a winter day, you can probably see that. Additionally, the residential properties in north, as Mr. Loveland pointed out, there is a 20-foot type D buffer that is platted on those lots. Again, it is not part of the lot, but there is a buffer that is platted. And finally, our building placement for the site, as Mr. Loveland pointed out, this closest building here, from the measure from the property line, measures 88 feet. This other building to the left would actually be more than that. You probably can't see it, but there are actually some dimensions we put on this slide that give you a frame of reference. The distance from the back of this house in Weatherstone to the corner of this building is 277 feet. It's a little bit more here. This is 287 feet from this house to this corner. And then from this building corner to this house is 274 feet. So that gives you an idea of how the spatial relationship is between the structures. As Mr. Barron offered at the beginning of the presentation, our client is willing to preserve an additional 7,200 square feet of existing vegetation along the west side of the site. And I'm going to show you, that's basically in this area here that has trees and vegetation in it. It is west of the power line now. It is not required as part of the buffer along the west side, but since we're not disturbing it and we can't get to it, it makes sense to offer that as well as in addition, for additional buffering to meet the criteria for an approval. As a numbers person, and I know some of you may be too, I'll give you some numerical areas to help in your deliberation. So if we had provided the 65-foot buffer along this northern boundary, that equates to 41,818 square feet of buffer that would be required. Currently, we are proposing 36,481 square feet in the buffer makeup areas that I pointed out earlier, which is 5,337 square feet short of meeting the requirement for that 65-foot buffer. So therefore, with the additional 7,200 square feet that we have offered, this would exceed what would be required if you look at it from a buffer standpoint for that northern As situated, this transmission easement renders about 3.15 acres of this site unusable. The site is 6.97 acres in total, and if you do the math, that's 45% of the property basically behind this easement line to the north and to the west. We really can't use, we can't put structures in it. We can park, as you can tell from here, under it, but we can't really use this for anything. We can't meet the buffering requirements with it because Duke requires no vegetation in there. So, and that is before we factor in the areas we have to make up for the buffers as well. And I've got a couple additional slides to help you with some visuals. So we took the two buildings that are proposed from the architect, took his building elevations and superimposed them on a Google Earth image and tilted them up so that you can see in three dimensions what this would look like. So this view is if you were looking from the north in the Weatherstone development, looking southward. This area here is the existing Kroger back here. This is the Mainard Crossing Shopping Center, the original shopping center. This is the Volvo dealership. This bicycle shop is right here. And these are the two proposed buildings that we are, have on our site plan. Here is the transmission line coming through here in this cleared area. You can see it stretches way beyond this image. You can even see one of the large structures that hold up the three power lines back here. These trees here in this, in the foreground behind the homes are the existing vegetation that exists today. And then you've got the power line behind it. And then this area here that I'm pointing at is the existing vegetation that we are saving behind this proposed building. We are supplementing it with additional vegetation to help it meet that type A opacity standard. And then this area to the right is the area where I discussed having that berm and then planting the vegetation on top where there currently isn't any. So it's behind the power line. Another view looking from, if you had a drone and you flew it up over Rose Sky Court, looking back towards the site. Mainard Road is here onto the left corner. This is the first building, the building that, if you were looking at the previous site plan, the building that was in the upper right, that would be this building. These are the trees that exist behind these homes. The power line, you can barely make out right here, that one structure. And the power line kind of runs back through here and goes off the screen in this view, but you can see the vegetation that's there. This view is from the other cul-de-sac called Silver Linings Lane, looking back towards the site. These, this is the building I was just talking about earlier. This is the other building closest to the Highland Oaks subdivision. These trees that are kind of drawn in there are the proposed trees on top of that berm I was mentioning. So that, that kind of gives you another vantage point of what we would be seeing at a maturity level when these buffers have, have grown into their typical five-year period. So it is my professional opinion that the strict application of the LDO standards would result in a hardship that would prevent the reasonable use of the property based on its current zoning. It is also my professional opinion that the requested reduction would alleviate this hardship while still providing adequate visual relief for the residential properties to the north. And finally, this is more of an opinion and like Mr. Barron mentioned, you know, many storage facilities of the 21st century have evolved over the last decade into higher quality facilities that do not look like the old cinder block wall barracks with orange doors and green roofs that they used to look like. The project will have higher quality buildings that look more like office buildings. The project will have higher-quality buildings that look more like office buildings than they do industrial buildings. And there are several of those in town that I pass regularly that they truly do look like office buildings, but they are indeed mini storage. And thus, had this been an office building, as previously mentioned, a fifty-foot buffer would have been adequate and would have been required. So with that, I'm going to conclude my testimony. I'll be available for questions afterwards, but I will turn it back to Mr. Barron right now.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I indicated earlier, we believe that we've satisfied the requirements for grant of this minor modification. I think this is one that just kind of makes sense. And I just want to share with you, as Mr. Tang mentioned, many, many stores are considered a class-six use. And so other types of class-six uses are amphitheaters, nightclubs and bars, dog kennels, outdoor recreation, telecommunications facilities, warehouse and distribution facilities, commuter rail stations. I mean, uses that have significant impacts to adjacent properties. I, I, I think under the circumstances, this is not only a request that makes sense, but you know, satisfies the evidentiary requirements for grant of the modification, and we would respectfully request you all's approval of the same. We're here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. At this time, I'll invite other speakers who have been sworn in, which speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Anyone to speak in support? Okay. Now open to, the hearing open to those who oppose the request. And as a reminder to those that would testify in opposition, please limit your testimony to facts that you know. The applicant's representative has a right to object to your testimony. He or she may object while you're speaking. They have the right to do that. Our contractual attorney is sitting beside me and can help determine whatever it we may consider. Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing no one will continue, and we'll call on staff to provide professional observations about the request.
So again, just to reframe, this is a modification request for reduction of the buffer, as you've heard. To review the approval criteria, this needs to follow Section 7210A3 of the LDO, and I'm not going to read that section to you, but did want to point out really, the applicable portion of that there is referring to kind of two tests. Does the reduction of the streetscape and buffer should only be allowed when meeting the required width, prevents reasonable use of the property based on zoning, and/or when additional existing healthy vegetation or open space is provided elsewhere on site? So as you heard, the applicant mentioned that there was a portion of the site that is being remained as, as open space. I don't, you offered that as a condition for, so they're offering that will be then preserved in open space. So that addresses, potentially addresses that criteria. I'll leave that for your consideration. Just a few more notes about the performance of the buffer itself. The number of required trees or the amount of required vegetation is not being reduced. It's still meeting a type-A standard, as Mr. Tang referenced. And the separation, the physical separation from the use is not being reduced as a result of reduction of this buffer width. The building is still eighty-eight feet from that property line. We weren't so concerned with the distance to the adjacent property, the house, but the distance to the property line is not less than sixty-five feet. It's in fact eighty-five feet. Just to show this, this one graphic, I think also again shows the open space that Mr. Barron and Mr. Tang were referring to. But with that, I'll, I'll wrap up and certainly am available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Loveland. Does either party believe there's evidence been presented this evening that requires this hearing to be continued? No? Okay. So now's the time for the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments. I would like, I, I agree with the applicant that, to me, this is like a no-brainer. I would like to comment on your opinions. We have to consider worst-case scenarios, and I don't know what the worst-case scenario is for a storage unit, and that's what bothers me. But if the worst-case scenario today would look like an office building, then I think your opinion is, is valid, and we ought to look into changing the requirements for that. That's my opinion on that. But if the worst-case scenario will look like an industrial building, then I think we should keep it the way it is, but just based on the year.
Okay. So it's hard to take the reason, and if you go back one or two slides where you had the yellow highlighted text, where it says that we can't reasonably develop the site because of the ordinances. This gets kind of into, a couple more where you had the text, one more, right there. You know, can't reasonably use the property. The applicant should have known this when he bought the property. I mean, we just rezoned this property. I mean, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious why someone goes and buys property knowing he wants to put the storage there, knows, is looking at the wires and doesn't pop into the town hall and say, hey, what's going to be the deal with the buffers here? You know, it's what's, what are the limitations based on this? I'm not that sympathetic to that at all. I feel like buyer beware, people need to understand what they're getting into. With that said, I, I can be convinced that this is going to be okay if I have some of these things that you took me today in conditions. One of the things that you said is that this is going to look like an office building. Do you have any kind of condition that states that? I mean, it's a very nice rendering that you have there where it looked like a brick office building, but do you have this condition that it will look like that or in some way obligates you to make it look like that?
To make it look to, as regards to the appearance of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Well, they're bound to CAM requirements, the Community Appearance Manual requirements, and there was a condition in the rezoning regarding some actual extra windows on the upper floor. So they're bound to meet those. They're not bound to have matched the exact appearance of what they showed you tonight.
Okay.
They did not offer that.
I just feel better. It doesn't have to say it has to look exactly like the photograph, but whatever those elements are, the masonry side or whatever, because if I lived in that house back there and I looked back at it and I don't have enough trees to veg, to, to screen it, I at least want to know it looks good, right? And so my next question is, those trees that you showed us, Ed, that exist today, that tree stand, have you made any kind of commitment to the town that that is going to stay and that you're not going to take any of those trees down?
Which ones do you?
This, this tree stand here is shown on the plan to be largely retained.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that, that makes me feel better. And then for the overall site, I mean, sometimes I feel like when you take a piece of property and you have things that are, make it weaker to supplement it, I think you are doing that with the extra seventy-two-hundred feet, so I think that's a positive. I don't know if you have any concerns for how that BMP is going to look, but this is going to end up being a gateway into this neighborhood here, so I wouldn't want it to be one of those BMPs that looks crummy, you know, most of the time. So to me, if you're making every effort possible to make this look as attractive as possible, then I can get past the, you know, the loss of the buffer that, that means when people see out and see into this site more than they would if it's fully buffered, it's going to look good.
Can I address the council?
Yes.
On the architecture? This request for buffer modification is inextricably tied to a site plan that's currently going through the process. You all don't see the site plan because it's subject to staff-level approval, but for the fact that we need a modification in order to facilitate it. So the site plan materials aren't in your staff report. This is an excerpt from them, which demonstrates the architectural commitments I'm happy to approach if you would like to take a look at those, but they, but they're part of the plan. And so in terms of offering them as conditions, we don't have standalone conditions because we have a site plan that's going through the process that ties our hands to, to exactly this, so.
Okay. And I think, you know, that we're still figuring ourselves out here with this new approach because before you would show us all that.
Right.
So we have to figure out, when you're, when you're coming in for one modification, that triggers other questions on the site plan, so, and I'm saying this more to Lisa who's standing behind you than to you, but you know, we have, thank you, we have to have, we have to have enough context, you know, as far as what this looks like, if, even though the modification is precise, because that modification triggers other things.
Well, and I do want to point out, and I was going to come up earlier to your point, Ms. Robinson, about the criteria, and if, I don't know which number slide that is it looks like. See if I get this right. I won't try again. So on the, maybe Doug can get it for me, the criteria slide again. So the part in yellow, it, it's an or.
Or.
You know, this is, this was written a long time ago. We haven't made any edits to it lately, and so there's an or in there. So the test before you tonight is, does meeting the buffer width prevent reasonable use of the property based on zoning? Or are they providing existing, existing healthy vegetation or open space elsewhere on the site, additional to what they would be required to do? So in terms of, you know, these kinds of plans, when you're only seeing modifications, are strange, but the approval criteria that you're looking at are narrow as well, and so it's not necessary that, you, you may not have to see everything in the site plan because you really should be focused on these criteria. And Mr. Silverstein may want to speak more to that as well.
Actually, I, I wanted to, to make a somewhat related point that relates to the guidance offered by state law and to the point, the, an applicant purchasing property that would need to have some sort of modification in order to be subject to reasonable use. And the 168-388 was amended in 2013, and this deals with variances and hardships, but it is somewhat instructive. And it says, one of the things that the fourth criteria that have to be proved is that the hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. And previously, that would have been considered what was called a self-created hardship. But the new-
You mean purchasing it and not-
Knowing that it needs some sort of variance or modification. But what they added in 2013 is a sentence that says, "The act of purchasing property with knowledge that circumstances exist that may justify the granting of a variance shall not be regarded as a self-created hardship."
Hmm. That's kind of interesting.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's, it's counter to common sense. If you, you know, if you buy a piece of property next to a racetrack and then complain about noise, you know, you kind of-
Buyer beware.
Yeah, kind of buyer beware. I mean, all I'm saying, I understand that you're saying it's a narrow route, it can be one or the other. When, you know, the applicants came up, applicants representatives came up, they cited both points. I don't think, it's, to me, I, I hear what you're saying, if that's the law, that's the law, but it flies in the face of common sense, and it seems wrong that someone can buy a piece of property and then turn around and go, oh, but it's, this is, you know, this is an impact on me. You know, you should do your due diligence when you buy a piece of property and understand that it may happen on it.
I had a couple of, so it seems to me like a type-A buffer, that you can't, this has come up other times, a type-A buffer you can't see through is still a type-A buffer you can't see through, whether it's fifty feet wide or whether it's sixty-five feet wide, you still can't see through it. It's, there's no different in opacity requirement of a type-A if it's thirty feet, fifty feet, or sixty feet, right, or sixty-five feet.
Correct. It's the same amount of vegetation. Now, it will be planted in tighter spacing here, so it's possible that it won't grow to be as large because it doesn't have as much room.
It's tall, but it's, okay, but I-
That is our most opaque planting standard.
Right. So, so, and then I appreciate, I think what you said, Doug, was that because you don't have, the staff doesn't have much concern because we're not reducing, we're not cutting into how close he is to the edge of the property. He's still eighty-eight feet from the edge. So type-A buffer that's type-A in a twenty or thirty-foot spot, even if you were to have a sixty-five-foot buffer, you could plant only thirty feet of it, correct, and get a sixty-five-foot type-A buffer and leave grass on the other. You don't have to plant the entire sixty-five feet, you just have a buffer.
If you have that available, staff would make you spread that out. They wouldn't let someone just bunch it up, but, I mean, you can, you can cram all that vegetation into thirty feet.
Okay. Because we already require thirty-foot type-A buffers in other places there.
Correct. There are thirty-foot type-A buffers.
So I have no trouble-
The only difference, this has a shrub component, whereas a thirty-foot doesn't.
Okay.
It triggers a little bit of a higher standard.
To, to me, the or is the deal on this, in highlighted in yellow, it's, it's or, and he's got, they're putting healthy vegetation elsewhere and/or open space. We've got two ors in this sentence, and it's clearly we meet, we meet that criteria. There's open, open space and healthy vegetation to be provided elsewhere, so it looks obvious to me.
Okay.
I have two questions. You, you asked about that vegetation, so I'm glad you asked about that one. I also noticed on the picture that the other set of vegetation, vegetation was there. Is that remaining or is that in the, going to be by the BMP, the one on the south side that you see right there? Yeah, is that remaining?
This stand, I believe, is being removed.
That's being removed. So the only one that's remaining is the one up at the north side?
Well, and there's vegetation along the west-
Oh, sorry, on the west, is that west side? Okay. Just a couple of quick questions. There's a sidewalk on Wyadell Way. Will that be continued with the new road? I know that doesn't have to do with this one, but it was brought up anyway since you brought up the, I want that to be a nice entrance in it.
On one side of the street, yes.
On the side that it's already on, so it'll just continue?
Yes, ma'am. That's my memory.
Yeah. And then the other thought I had is, looking at some of the pictures that the applicant put, the 3D imagery, looks like some of those trees were enhanced, I guess. Yeah, that, you know, some of the ones that, I don't know if that was, I see the, obviously the light green ones were added. Are those trees that are along the side of the new building, those are the current strand of trees that Councilmember Robinson was talking about at the same height?
Yes, the, the trees that are, as Mr. Love has pointed, those are the existing trees that we're saving, so the darker green trees are what Google Earth has shown as existing. I can't control how exaggerated they look, but that's, that's the imagery when you tilt it up on its side.
So based on this picture, we're to assume that the building is about at the same height as the current set of strand of trees that are there?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't reading something into that. All right, thank you.
Just to clarify, the seventy-two-hundred extra square feet of open space, that's in addition to the sixty-five-feet buffer that's required on that western side, thirty foot's on the side of the Highland Oaks, and thirty-five you have, and then this seventy-two-hundred square feet is in addition to the thirty-five feet-
Correct. So there's a portion, that's a required buffer here.
Okay.
This was not required space, so the LDO says if you're preserving existing open space that wasn't otherwise required. This was not otherwise required. They're, they're offering to dedicate it or preserve it or designate it on the plan.
With that condition, it seems to me that the LDO requirement is satisfied. Without that, and because that was not in the staff report that we had prior to tonight, I was prepared to vote no, but I think you've satisfied that. It's an and/or there, you don't have to do both of those things. It's questionable whether there's a reasonable use or not, as far as the other or, I mean, you indicated there isn't, I kind of think there is, but it's immaterial because you satisfy the, the second part of that, the seventy-two-hundred extra feet of open space.
Other questions, comments?
I would just echo your comments. Maybe we might want to look at reevaluating standards adjacent to storage facilities if they are constructed in a manner that makes them look like office.
If we could somehow do that in an ordinance, I'd be open to that. I see Russ writing all this down, so.
Key words being if they are constructed that looks like an office.
And the key for me is always look at the worst-case scenarios.
Correct.
I agree. Be cautious.
Yes.
That, that if I wrote by one, I think, last night or night before last, and it looked sort of like an office building, except you get by it, all that lights on the inside, and these roll-up green doors right through the glass. It was over in Apex, but we had the same thing with the orange, Carrie. So you look in this beautiful office building, but if you can see clearly roll-up orange doors, and it makes me believe that they tried to make, may look like an office building in the daytime. At nighttime, it's hideous.
Yeah, and that, yeah, and you-
Are you talking about-
I know exactly what you're talking about, and also the lights are, at least in that building, they look like they're like a white, white LED or a fluorescent or something. I mean, if you're going to make it look like an office building, and you're pushing it off as an office building, and you're going to get some kind of like reduced buffer because it looks like an office building, then the lighting needs to be commiserate with what you would see.
Are you speaking about the one that you passed when you're going into downtown Apex?
Yeah, that's the one I went by, went through.
Yeah, that's, that in my opinion would not be one that I would want to allow a lesser buffer. Some of the newer ones that we've seen, there's one on Mainard, I, I think, does a pretty good job, but.
Okay.
Are we getting to some?
I was just going to say, before we get too far off topic.
I have one, one more on the topic of the buffer, is that I also appreciate the pictures that are shown because I think what we've done here is we've, you can see from the pictures, is that the buffer is actually going to buffer the residents in the wintertime from seeing the back of the car dealership. So I think the, the improvement to the site is a big plus, even though we're not considering it, but it does, the buffer's much improved over what we currently have with a- it, but it does, the buffer's much improved over what we currently have with a, a green field there, except unless you just want to play, throw frisbees or something, it's much better.
Okay. Unless there's any other comments or questions, we'll move to the, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I'll ask council for a motion on the modification.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification request for the reason discussed. I move that we approve the request made by the applicant as the request meets all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
If I can interrupt-
We got to add the condition about the 7,200 feet.
Oh, that was added tonight?
Yes.
Okay. With the added condition of the 7,200 feet of open space on the west, the west side is marked in the, in the staff observation report.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion on this motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Ms. Silverstein, if everything's in order, I'm ready to close the public hearing.
Everything is in order.
All right. I'll close this public hearing. We have no other business for this quasi-judicial hearing, but I would like to mention that after we adjourn, we're going to have a work session, and it will be in conference room 10035. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Visit the Town of Kiri website, at townofkiri.org.